Thanks so much, Trevor. Just kidding. And I would love permission. Oh, do you want to?
I was just gonna make the motion for it.
Okay. We wanted to adopt the agenda. We're in open session for the regular board meeting for a moment. And I wanted to ask the board to adopt the agenda with flexibility.
So moved.
Do you have a question, Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
Item 10B.
I have some corrections on the minutes.
That's later on. We're not, yeah, we're not doing that today.
Okay.
Yep, that's tomorrow. But that's, thank you, you're ahead of the game. So you can bring that up tomorrow.
Okay.
So a motion has been moved.
Second.
Second, to adopt the agenda with flexibility. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great. All right, so our agenda's been adopted with flexibility. We are going to head back for several closed session items in our regular board. We're also gonna have several closed session items for the investment committee being led by Mr. Keely. So we will head back to the caucus room for that time. All right, so let's head on back. All right, so the regular board meeting, just a reminder, we had a couple items in closed session yesterday. So we are on item three, that's why it says three there, is our board committee work plan for the 1920 year. And it's an action item. So entertain them after you've had a chance to take a look at it. I'd entertain a motion. Any questions? Lynn.
Oh, thank you, Sharon.
Sure.
On the governance committee work plan, right now it shows that there is an education item in each of the three meetings that we have. But in November, we were planning to just have a longer item on the board onboarding process. So we won't be doing education on there, so just wanted to revise that.
So is that noted? Cassandra, are you the? Playing the role of Jackie Ennis right now? Okay. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Any other edits, amendments to committee work plans? I realize we're kind of doing this perfunctory. This is a very important item, actually, because these are our, this is basically our plans for the years for each of our committees, so.
We did discuss all of them with the committee chairs in May and constructed these in May for adoption.
All right. Okay, been moved. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. Our work plans for 1920 are approved. Thank you. Item four, our amendments to format for monthly reports. Part of the pension solution projects, we've got Grant, hi, Grant, and Joyce Lynn. Good morning, both of you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Grant Boykin, Public Affairs Executive Officer. And I'm joined by Joyce Lynn Wade Martinez, Director of Governmental Relations. So as you'll recall, earlier in the year, the board authorized CalSTRS staff to begin the rulemaking process for regulations that specify how employers report to us with the new pension IT system. We initiated that and we held a 45-day comment period. During that comment period, we received nine letters from county offices of education. We held a hearing in April and had no testimony at that hearing. Subsequent to the hearing, we had meetings with business leaders in the education community, including some who had submitted the comment letters. And I felt like those went well in terms of understanding where they were coming from. And the item you have in front of you is some amendments to the regulations that we're recommending based on the responses that we got. And what we are, we're hoping today that you'll approve those amendments and then also approve a, we think a 15-day comment period is appropriate based on the changes we're suggesting. And so if we get that approval today, we'll come back in September for final board approval before we send it through the regulatory process, which means it'll go to Department of Finance and the Office of Administrative Law. So there's 15 minutes slated for this item today. It's a rather lengthy item, so I'm gonna keep it at a high level. And then, of course, feel free to ask questions either during the presentation or after. And what I'm gonna do is walk through the comments we received. There was some overlap, so there's really seven comments or concerns that we outlined in the memo. The first has to do with cost. The cost of changing systems to match our reporting requirements. And we're sensitive to that issue, which is why in the draft regulations, we had built in a waiver period that would allow for 18 months beyond the October 21 effective date. And we've also, as we've had conversations with business leaders, we've emphasized the long-term efficiencies that we think will be gained not only by CalSTRS but by school employers and also the benefits for the members as well. But what we have done is recommend one additional six-month waiver period. That would mean after the effective date of October 21, there would be two additional years that employers would have to comply with the new reporting requirements. And then the next two comments have to do with the, any questions?
Sorry, Grant.
Yeah.
Dana.
So Grant, I got to thinking about the savings that districts were going to be receiving from the governor's new budget and the potential for added cost. Hopefully, they offset each other somewhat. But then I, then I kind of sprang to is, for the costs that districts are gonna be occurring, is there an element of size to that? So say like Wheat Elementary, they're, they're only reporting on maybe less than 20 people. But changing their software is, is gonna be a certain cost. Do you have any idea if the cost to a small district like mine would be dramatically different than, say, from Sac City?
So we've done a lot of outreach to try and get a better sense of the cost and outreach, including to the vendors who support their HR and payroll systems. I don't think that we have, we can identify a direct relationship between size and cost.
So it could be dramatically more expensive for smaller districts possibly than larger ones, just from?
A proportional aim.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe not. I guess it depends on how much money they have in reserves.
Could be.
All right, thanks.
Yep. So other questions about the cost issue? Okay. And then the next two comments have to do with what we call the employment file. So there's two sort of buckets in terms of reporting. One is the employment file and the other is the contribution file. So the employment file actually includes new data, data that we haven't asked for before. Well, contribution file, we're asking for some new things too. But what we're suggesting to clarify is that what's in the employment file is not currently required by statute. So the regulations that we're putting forward provide the specificity in terms of how employers would report certain things to us if, if they have that capability. But because they are not required in law, at this point, we can't require some of the data in the employment file. And the comments that we had about the employment file, one had to do with reporting leaves of absence. What we're asking employers to do, if they report leaves of absences in this way, is to report on a transactional basis, so when the leave happens. And the advantage of that is we think there'd be greater accuracy rather than doing a look back when somebody wants to purchase service credit. But also the other advantage is if, if we have knowledge that somebody is, has a leave of absence at the time, then we could reach out proactively and say, with a message that says, hey, you might be able to purchase service credit. And the earlier you do that, the cheaper the cost is and the easier it is to find. We've heard stories of difficulties that members have had when they try and track down information, possibly from a previous employer that might have been several years ago. And the other item that falls in that category of the employment file is annual total compensation. And that's a field that really came out of an audit recommendation several years ago as a way to increase internal controls. The idea being that in addition to the creditable compensation reported to us, that we would also get a look at total compensation paid to CalSTRS members so that we could compare and look for discrepancies to see if there are things that we need to raise questions about. And so what we're recommending for both is some clarifying comments. And then there was a category of leaves of absences for criminal misconduct that, in talking to employers, they don't necessarily have visibility. We were thinking about the felony forfeiture provision in the law, but there's other ways that that would get reported to us, so. Dana? Looks like Dana has a question.
So I got to thinking after we had the whole conversation about total comp, that there's a variety of, for lack of a better term, jobs that staff pick up. So like coaching or some people have independent, you know, more I can't pronounce it. They get more, they get a stipend or whatever for above and beyond what they're normally due for like independent studies and things like that. So if we're looking at total comp as opposed to credible comp, are we creating a headache for ourselves because a lot of people are gonna be making a lot more money than what their credible comp is? And if we're comparing that to every member that comes in, could we, is that something that might then end up costing us more time and effort in the long run?
So anyone can correct me if I'm not getting this right, but my sense is that we'll be looking at the aggregate picture and looking at trends in terms of increases and decreases. And so I think that noise might get sort of canceled out. And so we could see if there's aggregate increases in credible comp that don't match up with total compensation, that might be a difference to drill down on.
Okay.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna put something into effect that then ends up creating a headache for our staff.
No, understood. But this was a, it developed from a crow audit finding. And we had gone one route of trying to, it's essentially the data that school employers report to the Employment Development Department already. But for a number of reasons, we weren't successful in working with EDD to get that data, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then the, there's an additional four comments that have to do with data that's in the contribution file. And that's all essentially data that is required by statute that we already collect, but we are asking for additional data. And for each one of the comments, we're, we're suggesting clarifying and some technical changes to the requirements and the regulations. But just really quickly, those are types of service. And there was a, some comments that the types of service we had listed don't necessarily match up with the categories or the labels that employers use. And so what we've recommended is tying those to statute and working, you know, talking to employers about making sure that whatever they're reporting as reportable compensation matches with those categories that are in statute. And then there was a comment that there are duplicative fields in the contribution file layout, specifically assignment code, which is something we ask for now, and also time base. And, and yes, there's some overlap, but the, the time, the assignment code is currently used under current reporting. And so we need to, in order to be consistent with past data and for systems that aren't yet ready to report in the new way, we need to keep that category. And the time-based field is new. Specific values used to populate that field are necessary to determine when a member is mandated into membership. And so the existing reporting format doesn't fully align with the mandatory membership, so I think this'll give us better accuracy. And then there was also a comment about our request for reporting on the expected pay periods field. And under the new file format, we're going to be asking for more specificity around the pay periods that people are paid in so that we're more accurate. Okay? And then the final comments were around annualized pay rate. And so this is new, but we're asking, no matter how people are paid, we're asking that the employers report an annualized pay rate so there's consistency across all reporting and, and more accuracy. Anything to add? Okay. And so with that, and I know that was a lot and the memo itself is about nine pages, so that's a lot of information at a very high level, but we are happy to answer questions if you have them. And again, what we're looking for is approval for the changes and also for the 15-day comment period.
Action item, you want us to approve that you would proceed to post the proposed amendments for a 15-day posting period? And then we'd have an item in September, if there was no comments in September, that we would approve the amendments, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. An action item? Okay. Oh, go ahead and step up to the mic. And did you, yeah. In general, fill out a form, that way we know there's, it's fine. Go ahead, welcome. We're working on our public comment process. I know, there we go. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Derek Lennox with Capital Advisory Group. We represent a number of the county offices, most of them that wrote in with comments. And when they let us know that they had submitted these comments, I said, look, before, you know, we get too far ahead of ourselves, why don't we just reach out to Grant and the government affairs team and see if we can facilitate some sort of meeting? So I had the pleasure of helping to facilitate the two meetings that were discussed in between the business leaders at the county offices and the member account services staff as well as government relations. And they were two very, very productive meetings. Our folks came in and they had a number of concerns that were outlined in those letters. But the concerns were very quickly allayed by member account services in, in terms of the specificity of their responses to each of them. You know, half the battle in our field is stakeholders is feeling like you've been heard. They really diligently walked through the concerns and already had responses and amendments and proposals prepared. And so immediately, it became a really productive meeting. And then we had a second one in which we invited the county payroll staff to come. And they're the ones that are actually processing this sort of thing. And so they had a, a second meeting in which, you know, we refined some of the proposals. So all in all, I just want to say that, you know, we support the item here today and it was a good experience working on this regulatory matter. So thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you so much for your comments, appreciate that. Good to hear. Thank you. Okay, without further ado, I entertain a motion. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, you have direction. Thanks so much, Grant, Joyce Lynn, appreciate it. All right, item number five. Ashish. I think we've got Ashish, we've got Prashant, and then we've got Graham. Melissa, great. Yes, Melissa, you've been doing double duty. Pension Solution Budget and Update, very important item. Keeping us updated on how Pension Solution's doing. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ashish Jan, Chief Technology Officer and sponsor of this project. And I want to introduce Melissa, he's an interim co-sponsor of this project. And Melissa is with this project from day one and now is leading our Pension Solution Steering Committee. And she has a vast knowledge in this area and pension solution overall. Graham Dirait is Grant Thornton and he will be providing the overview and the recommendation. And then, you know, Prashant is the project director. So, so this time, we just put a simple agenda item. We have action item in the budget, we have a good write-up we provided. So maybe we'll go over quickly about the history and the context and where we are and how we came here today. Prashant will go over the project status, risks and challenge and mitigation. And then Melissa will take over the next step. So before we go to the budget, I think I will request Cassandra to take over this because there are a couple of slides and Cassandra did, you know, a lot of analogy with you guys. And I thought that maybe it's a much better, if Cassandra will present.
All right, go ahead. Thank you. One of the things I wanted to just highlight, you have some placemats in front of you. And one of the members' last meeting had asked that we give some more historical timeframes of the work that's been done. And so that has been constructed in this roadmap that, that is in front of you of when we started. So we've been working on this visualizing and planning for 12 years now. So we are, we're in a good spot, I'm glad that we're on this end of it. One of the things I did want to point out in this, when it's, in this bubble that for 2018, it says the TRB approves schedule update through 2020 and a tentative revised schedule. It really was an interim budget. And that's what I wanted to go over because if you remember, in July of 2018, we had, or in February of 2018, we had amended the CGI contract for $34 million. And then in July, the board approved an interim budget to add that cost component only. But it did not add the cost component for our internal staff running through the end of the project or our other vendors such as IPAC, IVNB, and other contractors that we use as business analysts or other technical support that are not state staff. So this is simply to add that cost component to the budget. So in, this is again, a little bit of historical perspective. In 2015, the board approved a baseline budget of $251.8. We had awarded CGI the contract in June of 2015 for $136.4 million. And the, the rest of the $251.8 was for our internal staff. I mean, it's, you know, all the resources that we're using internally and the other contractors that we use to implement the system. There was also a $27 million contingency built into that budget for us to use as we move through the project. In July of 2018, as a result of a fit gap analysis, which was really going deep into the requirements of what CalSTRS asked for and what the, what the product delivers and finding out and identifying any gaps that existed that we needed to accommodate or change in the system. And so that fit gap analysis resulted in an amendment with CGI and we added $34 million to their contract, which raised their contract amount of, to $170.4 million. And at the time, we asked the board to approve an interim budget, adding that to the $251.8. And that gave us an interim baseline budget of $285.8. We did, at the time, project what our costs would be if we added, included the staff resources and our other costs through the end of the, the new schedule that we were working with at February 2022. And we projected those costs to be $304.8. That is after consuming all of the $27 million contingency. So it's $34 million for the CGI contract and it was $19 million plus the $27 million for the CalSTRS staff and other vendors, which was in totality $53 million from the $251.8 to the $304.8. We wanted to just do an interim baseline budget and come back after we refined the numbers because we wanted to make sure that our trajectory was gonna stay on schedule. We wanted to come back with a final budget that we thought was more refined and we were more confident with. And the good news is, is that we still are projecting a three, one year later. We haven't moved from the projection of $304.8. And we've actually made some small improvements that we are trying to manage to ensure that we have a small amount of contingency should anything adjust in a, in a contracts or in, within a project's schedule. Because there are a lot of things that change and we're managing a, a seven-year project and a very large amount of money. And we're doing it day by day, dollar by dollar. So it's being managed very, very tightly. And I think we've done a tremendous job, particularly to Prashant and the sponsors, the cosponsors and the directors and business leads have done a tremendous job at keeping us on schedule and negotiating every issue very diligently on behalf of CalSTRS. So we're in a very good position moving forward and asking for finalizing the budget at $304.8, which was again, the same projection that we had last year. Those are all the same number, so that's good news. Again, so this is another perspective of what's gonna happen next. We had the original baseline budget of $251.8. We had the $34 million contract amendment and then the interim baseline budget and then the budget balance that we're adding to get to the $304.8 million for the total budget. In November, we will be asking, or bringing forward as part of the operations budget, a request for funding authority to cover that $53 million difference between the original baseline budget and the new, newly approved budget that we're asking for with a BCP. And it'll be part of the operational budget. That was all I had, but I would be happy to ask, any questions? The, I don't know if you have questions on this, but this is an action item to finalize the budget. And if you want to do that, have that discussion now or move into the project status. I just wanted to kind of differentiate the two.
Gail.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Department of Finance is generally supportive, but we do have a few questions and will abstain from this item given that we don't know how it'll go through the BCP process. But these questions will, will lead to some of the, I think, the questions as you go through the BCP process. So what is the expectation for the $4.7 million cost contingency?
Well, the expectation, well, we're, what we've been working really hard with is like, what I said just a minute ago, is we had $27 million in contingency built into the budget at the, at the beginning of the project. When we re-baselined the budget and projected it out, we consumed that $27 million and had a plan, I mean, the projection of $304.8 was to run the seven-year year project with no contingency. That's, that's almost, you know, and, and that's not achievable. But what we're manned, what we're, what we didn't want to do is come back and ask for additional money. This is a seven-year project and a lot of money. We wanted to approach it prudently and look at where, where can we have some savings to add money back into the budget? We've renegotiated a lot of our contracts with, with our other vendors. We, you know, we negotiated the CGI one, but there's other vendors we've asked for cost reductions. Some of the projections in our internal staff have ramped up at a, at a slower rate, so we had some savings there. What the plan would be to have that available should, for instance, time is money in a project. So if there is some strain on achieving something, we need to be able to quickly deploy resources to, you know, mitigate any slip in the schedule. And to do that would cost money. And that would be an example of how you would spend some of the $4.7 million if you have to deploy more resources. That cost is, is accounted against the project budget and we would, we would use it for that, for instance.
Thank you. And then more performance, holdback amounts not initially considered for the project? And can you share how much in holdback amounts are expected?
How much of the holdback amounts?
Yeah.
The holdback, the hold, the holdbacks, we are doing holdbacks and it is part of this project budget. It was originally 10%. What we negotiated as part of the CGI amendment was an additional 5% on late deliverables. So it's 10 and then an additional 5, so in totality of 15% holdback, which is part of the $304.8.
But in the initial project, the holdback amounts weren't referenced?
I don't, yeah, they've, it's always 10%. I'm not sure, are you wondering where the visibility of those were or I'm not exactly sure?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't see it. Department of Finance didn't see it, so when you go through the BCP process, you may want to maybe clarify that. Thank you. Okay. And then the final question that we'll have is just the, the additional $53 million that to complete the one fiscal year after the project completion in 2122? And that's again, kind of your safety net for cost overruns? Is that what you're?
The timeframe of spending that?
Yeah, like why you need it. So it looks like your project is completed and then you're still asking for additional funding the year after?
We're asking for additional time to spend the funding that's approved. So we want to have a flexibility in, in, in spending the money after the 2022 period. We expect to stay on, on, on schedule for that. But if there's any expenditures that we want to push into another, you know, their timeframe, then we want to be able to have the flexibility to do that.
So it would be flexibility on the expenditures, not on the timeframe for completion, or is it both?
Right. Well, the, the goal is the timeframe of completion would be 2022, but it would be for the expenditures.
Okay.
Yeah. If it changes, we would certainly come back and have a discussion about that.
Right. I mean, you can imagine the scrutiny that the state goes through in, in determining costs and cost overruns for these projects and finding kind of the right balance for that. So I appreciate that, thank you. And again, we are generally supportive, so I just, but I do think those are important questions as you go through the process. Thanks.
Lynn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm just curious, at this point in the project, are you confident that the vendors are still providing the same level of resources and the right personnel to meet the goals?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, in the last eight to 10 weeks, we had a lot of good discussion with CGI and I think Graham can give you more assurance, but we are seeing on the ground that they replace when they have some turnover, they replace with the right skill set. And quickly, they came up in this and I think every day is a different day sometimes, kind of. We have something going on the other than like sometimes testing, sometimes requirement, sometimes test session, but the vendor is very responsive so far.
And I would just, I guess, concur with that in terms of the actual number of resources CGI has been ramping up. So it's actually they're increasing the size of the team, especially as we get into this big testing phase over the summer. So there's more people on the ground than there were.
Okay, good. So it sounds like the 4.7 million in contingency would be enough to conceivably cover any additional resources needed.
Well, yeah, the 4.7 is the resources for our internal staff. The contract that we, the amendment that we negotiated with CGI had 6.7 million credits built into that that we're using as a contingency for any adjustments or small change requests that we go through in the regular course of the project oversight. So we have a little bit, we have a totality of about $10 million. Part of it's in the contract, part of it's for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions about the budget? Because what I'd like to do is actually just go ahead and vote on the action item of recommending the budget, approving the budget, and then have us talk a little more about the oversight of the project. Is that right? Yep, I got you. Karen, go ahead.
I just have one question about the, on page TRB 63, the 53 million. How is that related to the contracts requiring board approval in another item, item 10D? Are they, it's the same, right?
It's the same. Because, you know, there's two different, there's three different things that occur. The, when we did the amendment with CGI's contract, you did a, a part of your contract oversight for contracts over a certain dollar value of a million dollars.
Right.
You approved that separately.
Right.
And then you approved the budget. And so this is another budget approval for that. Some of the, in item 10D, you do have two contracts. One is being amended and one is being renewed or a new contract with our IPAC. That is part of the budget that we're talking about, but it's a separate oversight responsibility of the board is to approve contracts over a certain dollar value.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay, so they're kind of, they kind of go hand in hand?
They do, they, yeah.
Okay.
They're just different oversight responsibilities and we want to, we take every step of oversight independently to make sure that we don't miss a.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
One of those areas.
Good, Karen, good. Any other questions about the budget? Let's go ahead and it's an action item. Let's entertain a motion. Okay, Karen's moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor of approving the budget for pension solution, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yep.
If we do a roll call so I can stay in as possible.
I usually do like approve, yeah. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Opposed, nay. Abstentions? All right, so we have Gail abstaining.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So the budget's approved. Go ahead and give us the update on the project.
Thank you, Cassandra. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Prashant.
So in the next three slides, we're going to share the status for each of the three functional rollouts in the pension solution. For the, on this slide, we have a status risk rating from the oversight vendor and challenge and mitigation for the functional rollout one, which is around employer readiness environment. And as you will notice that this time we have a new color to identify the activities that have completed over time and requirement confirmation, design, development. These are three activities which have been completed for functional rollout one. So I will say Team CGI and CalSTRS, both teams have done a great job of taking these activities to finish line. And we are targeting October 2019 for the go-live and we are making good progress towards that milestone. And one of the items I would like to highlight here is around user acceptance testing for the functional rollout one. User acceptance testing is our way of verifying whether we got the functionality that we wanted out of this release or rollout. And our UAT team in collaboration with business test lead and SMEs from member account services and the employer account services are doing a great job of keeping up with the UAT and we started last month and we are on track to finish it over the next six weeks. And post that, we are going to wrap up a couple of activities around data conversion implementation. And so we are looking good so far for the October 2019 go-live milestone perspective. For the functional rollout two, this is the most complex and the biggest rollout that we have. It's a resource, the number of resources are involved in this rollout. Overall, the status remains green as last time. There are, there are two areas I would like to highlight here. One is around contractor acceptance testing and other is around user acceptance testing. We call it CAT. So CAT testing is essentially led by Team CGI. They are doing the first phase of CAT testing. They started in April of this year. They are going to complete it by November of this year. And it's going well, so great work by Team CGI on that front. User acceptance testing is led by CalSTRS team and there are a number of knowledgeable business test leads and SMEs working across business areas. They are collaborating together to come up with about 5,000 test cases that we expect to have for this functional rollout two. And those test cases will be executed to verify whether we got the functionality that we wanted out of this system. So great progress being made by the business team and the UAT team together. And we are looking forward to wrap up those test case creation towards the end of this year so that we can start our testing next year. In general, I would say both Team CGI and CalSTRS are doing a great job of keeping up with lots of activities that are in play for this functional rollout. And I would also like to highlight the fact that I mentioned last time, that since this is the biggest rollout and there are a number of concurrent activities that are happening together. And that certainly has a strain on the number of resources. And resources are impacted, just not on the project. It also, we need help from the business areas to, as a subject matter expert. So we are trying to find a balance between running operations and running the project activities and to keep up. So far, we have been able to do it and we look forward to prioritize and enable good communication to keep up with those challenges. So so far, we are able to mitigate the risk quite well at this point of time. For the functional rollout three, this is about customer service management, announced members self-service and many other functionalities underneath. Since we met last time, we have made significant progress. We actually completed the FR3 fit gap exercise on schedule as I met for a couple of days ahead of schedule. I will say thanks to all the senior business leadership in the business areas across the organization, SMEs, business core team, our business lead Jennifer and Gina, they have done an amazing job of taking this task to the finish line. This fit gap is our way to explain to CGI what we expect them to deliver in FR3 and it's their opportunity for us to understand from us. So that activity has been completed on time rather before schedule. And as a result of that activity, there are some gaps we have identified in FR3 that we are right now working to reconcile and come up with a finalized scope that we are going to push through for FR3. But in general, I think we are, so far, we are on track and we have good confidence based on what we know at this point of time to keep up with the work that we have ahead of us.
Great.
That's all I had. If there's any question I can take now or maybe next time to Melissa.
I don't see any questions from board members, so.
Okay, then I'll finish with the wrap-up. Good morning, everybody. So as elaborated on in the prior item, part of our next steps include conducting that second comment period for the new file format. As Prashant discussed, we are wrapping up the functional rollout three fit gap exercise and finalizing the scope determination, or finalizing the scope determination and then ultimately refreshing our schedule for project deliverables and milestones accordingly. And then lastly here, we'll be preparing for that fifth functional demonstration. And we're really excited about that because this is associated with that functional rollout two design, which is the crux of what we do here, benefit applications and calculations and payments. There's a few items listed there just to give you a sample of some of the functionality that will be covered. The last one there, the member lifecycle scenario, that's really important to us because it will include the end-to-end business process. So we'll be able to see taking a member who is enrolled in CalSTRS and walking through service retirement, through refund, disability benefits, and up to including survivor benefits. So we are really looking forward to that demonstration. And that's it.
I just want to add that this demo is, will be a big demo. So if you are interested, Karen, just let us know so we can, we can adjust our logistics. And I think we're targeting like two-hour window kind of, because we have to cover quite a bit in this. It's targeting right now in September, end of September, 26th, kind of the date. But if you are, you know, want to join, please join the party. And also, I think I just want to shout out the team that who put together this history and the communication team, our chain management team, and any feedback you can provide. I think this is providing a good context about the history of this project so far. I think Dana requested this one last time and we just put together. In the back of that one, we have the benefits of the project, so the objective and the benefits and we will change and depending on how we're moving forward and then we'll add more to it. So I think this is about, that's about it and maybe we'll.
I think these are great, Prashant, just for like these long-term projects. It's so helpful to have something like this. I think it's a helpful tool for all of the different longer-term projects because it's just, it's, I think as a board member, it's just hard to kind of.
Yeah.
Keep track over the long.
Especially for new board members, it's also important.
Yeah, that's great. I've got a question from Joy.
Thank you. And just, I agree, these documents are really helpful as well as the kind of consistent reporting that you have, meeting to meeting. I think it really helps to remind us of sort of what the prior status was and how it compares to current. So that's really great. So I did notice, I have one question on the slide on functional rollout two. You have that overall scored or rated as a medium risk. And just kind of by comparison to functional rollout one, the status is mostly green with a, you know, just with one yellow item. So I guess I was just curious about what put that into medium risk category versus toward, back toward green.
Good question. So the main reason it's in medium risk is because of the concurrent activities that we have. We have lots of parallel work stream happening right now and this risk rating is an indication, is a hint that in case there is a delay in one activity, it may impact other activities and so on and so forth. So it's not really a problem right now, but it's, but it's a risk that in case there's a delay, it may impact other activities.
Right, so it just kind of speaks to the fact that different risks have different impact on the project.
Right, yes.
Okay. And then just one last question. I know that, you know, when we were working with CGI and kind of renegotiating the terms of the contract, one of the, in addition to the financial terms, there was also, you know, an emphasis on making sure that at different stages in the project, we would be satisfied with the demonstrations and being able to see the functionality at critical stages in the project. I know you've talked about some of the demos that you have and what's coming up, but do you, are you satisfied with the responsiveness from CGI on that front?
I'd like to ask this question, but I think we reported in the past also about the demos and I think Melissa can add more, but the business folks were very thrilled about the demo and what they saw, what the expectation from CGI. Megan is here, Joel is here. They worked very hard to put together a good demo. It's just not like, okay, something is coming 18 months later, but they challenged the team and the team did a very good job so far.
And I'm happy to speak to that as well, in concurrence with what Ashish is saying. The business areas have been pleased with the results of the demonstration. We're seeing processes demonstrated that are using raw data that has been scrambled, so there's no PII available. But we are seeing the outcome of the design and the vision that we have for that functionality during these incremental demonstrations.
Right, and I think being able to see it real time or closer to real time is really important to your ability and our ability to have, to maintain confidence in the project.
And this is a lesson learned from past also. You know, the demo is very important and whatever isn't coming out, we're doing the divestment after that and then we see if there is any gap is still left in there, so how we can change that.
The other point I would just add to that, Joy, is that what we've seen with the last couple of demonstrations is fewer and fewer gaps. With the very first one, we had a list. It wasn't extremely long, but we've seen fewer and fewer changes needed when that functionality is demonstrated. So that's building confidence for us as well.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing I would like to add on that is that for the demos, and these demos are happening before even the testing has happened. So you can imagine the kind of, the confidence that people may have in the organization that testing has not happened yet, but we are able to demonstrate the functionality that has been built around it. So just wanted to add that.
Good, thank you.
Graham, do you have any comments to add? Or we've got about five more minutes for this item, so.
Well, then let me skip forward to a couple of slides. I mean, I'm gonna concur, I guess, on a lot of things that have been said already. Yeah, if we can just switch the slides over. Our assessment of the overall status of the project is very similar to the conversation we had at the last board meeting because the project is basically on that same flight path. It's on schedule, on budget. There are risks associated with the number of concurrent activities, potential level of stress on the employees and, you know, the team in terms of how much has to be done, which is why sort of the resources area is the only area we're flagging as an area of, you know, potential more significant risk. And the one other item obviously is we're, we're very happy that Melissa is here as the interim co-responsor, but we're also very looking forward to that position being filled on a permanent basis. The one other thing I wanted to talk about to use, a little bit about what we plan to be doing over the next couple of months between now and the September board meeting. So our focus areas as oversight, obviously monitoring, testing, execution, so everything's on schedule for FO, FR1, user acceptance testing and FR2 CAT right now. But that's, you know, it's a hard push, so we're going to be monitoring to see if that continues, especially as FR2 is getting into some of this really complicated calculation testing. It'll be a real, you know, real test. Looking at scope management as the scope is being defined for FR3 as an outcome of this fit gap. And then the other thing we've been talking with the project about is as we have starting to think about implementation planning and go-live planning for FR1 and then, you know, further out, FR2, really understanding what's absolutely critical, it has to work for the solution to work once it does go live, you know, because you don't necessarily need 100% of everything to be working perfectly on day one, but you do need a lot of it to be there. And having clarity on that can help make decisions if you do get into a process where you have to be making trade-offs at some point. So those kind of conversations are happening. We'll be continuing to monitor the level of collaboration and transparency between Team CGI and the CalSTRS project team, which I'm happy to say has, you know, continued on its improved trend that we've seen over the last couple of months. And then the final piece is, you know, we've been holding off our own external reporting partner reach out until the comment periods are all done, so we don't want to get mixed up in that process. But assuming those current periods do wrap up over the next month or so, we plan in August to do some limited reach out to some of the external reporting partners just to validate that they feel like their questions and concerns around the process have been heard and they're feeling, you know, as ready as they can be expected to be. So those are our plans for the summer and then we'll be reporting back on these, obviously, at the September board meeting. And that's what I have.
Great, thanks, Graham. Any questions from board members? Excellent, thanks, everyone. I'm glad everything's on track. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Well, who's the baby?
All right. Any members from the public that want to speak on item number five? Seeing none. All right. So item six, David. We've got e-payment implementation, AB 2052. We have 15 minutes allotted for this item. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Munoz and I oversee the Treasury and Cash and Banking Management Unit here at CalSTRS. A primary function of the Cash and Banking Unit is to collect account deposit and reconcile all of the contributions that come to the system. Just as, to give you a sense of scale, as of 6/30/2018, that value was about $11 billion and represented somewhere around 3,300 transactions. So there's a lot of activity that goes through that particular unit. And the proposal before you relates directly to that core function because it will help streamline the method in which we are collecting. will help streamline the method in which we are collecting contributions from our employers. In addition, the proposal will enhance internal controls, increase security over system assets, and also reduce the overall processing cost for both the system and our employer community. Specifically, the proposal before you requests that the board authorize an effective date of Assembly Bill 2052 for July 1, 2020. And what that would do, it was, it would allow staff to operationalize the provisions of that particular legislation. I think it would be valuable just to give a little bit of context and a little bit of background, especially for the new board members regarding Assembly Bill 2052. And I, I would, I would start, I would start by saying that consistent with board policy, which is to sponsor and support legislation that improves benefits and services, not only for the system, but also how we deliver those to our members, the board took an action in November of 2017 to sponsor Assembly Bill 2052. Subsequent to that action, the bill was chaptered into law in roughly July of 2018, so about a year ago. A key, something key to note about that is while the board did support that bill, and it is in law as of today, it is essentially non-operational until the board takes a separate action to implement a, to implement a date for us to operationalize the, the provisions of that bill. So I think it would be also valuable to just briefly cover, just remind the board what the bill did. And so there's really three sort of key components to the bill. And the first, and, and what's most impactful to the system and to our employer community, is that it limits the methods in which Calisters will receive contributions from employers to only an electronic fund transfer method, specifically through an automated clearinghouse. So I know I just babbled off a bunch of banking sort of terms. But I, I think if we were to sort of distill it all down, really what we're doing and what that provision does is we start moving away from paper checks, and we start moving towards an electronic means of collecting contributions. If you've never heard of ACH, that's okay, but I can pretty much assure that you all use it because it's part of your standard banking platform that you would use for your online banking. It is industry best practice. It's one of the most common uses of transmitting cash, especially for high-volume routine transactions, very, very similar to how we treat contributions to the system. Moving along, the, the second key component of that legislation is that it basically offers a waiver period for employers that for whatever the case may be are unable to comply with the provisions of this bill at a date that the board approves, which we are suggesting to be July 1, 2020. They can apply for a waiver which would extend the period in which they have, and would also give my unit an opportunity to provide additional support to those employers to help them become compliant with this legislation. The final piece of this, of AB 2052 was that, and, and we've sort of talked about this already, but it's essentially non-operational until the board takes an action to approve an effective date. And that, and that provision was specifically and very consciously drafted because we wanted to allow, allow time from when the bill was actually chaptered into law and give us some time to perform some outreach and some socialization to the employer community. And so, so after the, over the last year, that's exactly what we've been doing. And just to give you a few highlights, I'm, I would start by saying that, you know, we definitely understand that the employer community is going through some changes with regards to pension solution. And we really wanted to ensure that the requirements of this particular bill didn't create any, any other disruption or any disruption at all for their operations. So I'm excited to report to you some of the results of that employer engagement. I would start by saying that, and I should have mentioned this earlier, but we have engaged with all of our employer community. And I'm speaking specifically to our unique reporting entities. So there's roughly 92 of those. The engagements were primarily in live venues, allowing for real-time engagement and collaboration. And then I would also note that the primary target audience within these live venues was the, the payroll staff and also the business officers. These are the, sort of the boots-on-the-ground sort of people that would have to implement this change. And it was, you know, it was very refreshing to hear directly from them on what their thoughts and opinions were of this bill. So I, I would say that the, the overwhelming response from the employer community was, was positive to this. You know, employers are already transitioning from their paper and very manual processes to this. More than half of the 92 reporting entities are already submitting contributions in this fashion to us as well, with more currently in transition. Finally, I would, I would say that if, if I had to, if I had to give you a theme of, of what the feedback was from employers, it would really be divided into two sort of related buckets. The first would be that the employer community would first ask the team, are we currently compliant? And that's just because some people's perspective of what an electronic transfer of funds is, is different than others. And so for the most part, my response to that was, yes, you're already compliant, and thank you for doing so. And there's nothing more that you need to do for this bill. For the group of folks that, or the employers that I had, we had to say, no, you're actually not compliant. That doesn't actually meet the definition of what we're looking for. Their next question was, well, how do I become compliant with this particular legislation? And, and then, you know, we would explain to them that we have a process in place right now. Most of the administrative burden is on us. Please just fill out this form. And if you submitted a contribution by check in July, we can set you up to be submitting it by an ACH format by August. So in terms of next steps, with the approval of this item, we have another year to go for continued engagement and socialization. So we'll continue to work with the employers that are no longer, or that have not yet subscribed to an ACH method. We are in the process of creating a, a one-stop-shop webpage on the calisters.com site, which would house all of the information, facts, things that they would need to have to transition from a manual process, excuse me, to the ACH format. And then in addition, we have a targeted circular that will be going out over the course of the next, excuse me, over the course of the next year, just to keep people updated on the progress of implementation. So that concludes my prepared comments. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So Peres has had this for several years. Have we, have we had any conversations with Peres about how many of our similar reporting agencies are, are not complying with their requirement?
Yes, thank you for asking that. I meant to mention that during my presentation. Yeah. So one of the first steps we took after the bill was chaptered is connect with our friends at Calpers, because they had a, a bill that just one year prior to ours had already been chaptered, and they had already worked through that implementation. Actually, the bill, let me, let me correct that for the, for the record. The bill was chaptered way before that, but they had actually just finalized their implementation of that. So in talking to them, they had, you know, very good, almost all of their employers had subscribed to that ACH method. And I think the takeaway for the board here relative to that is, to the extent part of our population is currently not submitting via an ACH method, they likely are doing so for the Calpers-covered members that work within our schools. And so therefore, what that means is the structure's already in place. So adding another payee such as Calisters is a relatively streamlined process.